The very last one of these. And it should have a nice color, red. The balance on this is two hundred and four thousand, seven hundred twenty-three, and eighty-four cents. So to update you on what we have been able to get done here. Fat Cat's contract with Jason and Stacy Jones. On October sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, a loan was given to them of thirteen thousand, five hundred dollars. The loan document was signed, two thirteen, twenty twenty-four. Three payments had been received initially of two hundred and fifty-four dollars and seventy-six cents each. They came in and paid off their loan on February ninth, twenty twenty-five, a total of thirteen thousand, four hundred ten, and seventy-two dollars. So that contract has been successfully concluded. The second that I want to bring you up to date on is the Rabbit Cove Road Loan that the EDC made to the city of seventy-two thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five dollars. That loan was to be paid monthly at a rate of one thousand, six hundred twelve dollars and eighty-two cents for forty-eight months, with a three percent interest rate, beginning November twenty twenty, and ending November twenty twenty-four. The city began initially paying that on the monthly installments as agreed, and then they switched to quarterly payments, so that when they get their checks that come in to run the city, they then paid that quarterly. The original loan required the three percent interest rate and the return of the entire loan amount, and that has been successfully paid in full as of today. The last payment was made today of four thousand, eight hundred thirty-nine dollars and forty-six cents. And you will see on your next bank statement for the month of March, that final payment. So sat there today, they're paid off and made that good. Capel Investments LLC was the purchaser of the unimproved real estate property, the four point five six acres at fifteen fifty-two East State Highway two seventy-six. They made their final payment for that property of fifty thousand dollars on October thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. All sales tax payments amounts to the city that the city is supposed to provide the EDC have now been paid successfully, and they are now current as of today. The last payment that they needed to give us was thirty-one thousand, eight hundred sixty-nine dollars and forty-two cents, and that was paid successfully into our bank account on February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five. So I've gone through all the contracts, we have all of those caught up. The only outstanding contract for this board is the Fish and Nutrition Loan that went to Ms. Cassandra Cantrell, that was a loan of two thousand, six hundred sixty-four dollars and eighty-two cents. She has not made any payments on that loan. Now I have gone through and read all the minutes from twenty twenty-one through to the present day. Thank you guys for having a very long meeting, so it was a lot of minutes. Y'all have discussed this loan amount to Fish and Nutrition. We are not going to discuss that at today's meeting, because that's not on the agenda to discuss what we're going to do regarding that particular one, and no decision had been made with any vote for that. So in the consent agenda items, all I'm doing is catching you up on what's in the bank account and what has been paid. So we can approve the consent agenda all with one vote. The other thing before you make that is we have bills that have been not paid because there's been a hiccup with the board not functioning and getting two bills. So bills that need to be paid today, we have a five hundred dollar bill that will go to our attorney, and she has well earned it. We have a payment, we have four months of work by Ms. Sylvia as our secretary, and she is behind on getting that payment. So right now she is owed as of today, four hundred dollars. We have a hundred dollar bill going to the Chamber for the EDC's membership as part of the Chamber of Commerce. And we have, there will be three people who will need to have their TEDC membership fees of one hundred and seventy dollars paid for them from EDC. Those three people will be Elizabeth Osborn, hers has not been paid. These won't go in until you're officially on the board, but yours would need to be paid. And then Mary Chumley, who we'll talk later, the city secretary, needs to be a member as a part of this board and the work on this board. The four people that have been paid are myself, I paid for my own, so I'll need to be reimbursed the hundred and seventy dollars for that. Larry's been paid, Kathy's been paid, Brett's been paid, and Allison has been paid.
I have not been paid.
No, she, Pam paid it with her debit card.
No, it was never paid.
It came out of the bank account.
Well, it should not have been, because it was under my account and it was not paid.
Well, I'll check with Pam about that, but I will tell you Pam paid for four members, and you were the fourth that she told me. So I'll, but I'll check with that.
I can get you a statement to show, just so you have it.
Alright. So, and whether paid or not, that money is gone, however Pam was did that, so I'll have to follow up on that. So the only thing that I would ask is for a motion to approve consent agenda items A through I. And I'd ask for a separate motion to approve, for the board to approve, me paying Sylvia today, of my personal account, the four hundred dollars that's owed her, and then the EDC will reimburse me for that check. Okay, so that would be two motions. Chair would entertain a motion to approve consent agenda items, agenda items A through I.
I make a motion.
I second the motion.
She shouldn't be paying personally, the EDC should just pay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, Chair would entertain a motion, the, the board agree for me to pay Sylvia and to reimburse me for her fees.
I make that motion.
Everyone in favor? Would you hand Sylvia her check? I want to apologize, okay? You're, you're not ever going to be sitting here four months later trying to get paid, alright?
I'm surprised you wouldn't scream at me.
Well, I think I still added a, added on to, give, add it on.
I apologize, we thought we could do something else, but we looked at the minutes and they weren't signed yet. So I didn't even go get the debit card yet.
Alright, so now we're going to move on to item eight to discuss the profit, profit and loss statements. In your agenda packets, you have all of your profit, loss statements. So take a moment, look through those, and if you have any questions about them, or you want to take any actions on them, you can. If you're satisfied with them, there's no action that needs to be taken, so a motion is not necessary. Oh, I guess we ought to take a motion to approve them.
I will make a motion to approve the statements from October thirty-first, November thirtieth, and December thirty-first of twenty twenty-four.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Four oh. Alright, now we'll go on to item nine. Discuss or take action for internet improvement in the park. Brett Myers is down in Melbourne to provide update. So Brett, I have you down to provide an update in the last agenda. You said that you would get with the city and talk to them about what they're currently giving?
I had to get a contact, I tried to get it from Allison, which I couldn't get her, and then got Pam, Pam was out of the country. I just got it Saturday. But also during that time, I also, from a technical standpoint, I talked to a buddy of mine who's kept up with this stuff. Just so you know, I'm, I did the original Wi-Fi setup at DFW, but that was twenty years ago, and I've been in IT often on this. But I got a buddy that's still very, very high on the scales, keeping up with this stuff. And so I was kind of wondering, and I explained to him about another company, and he was, and he knew what it was, and about how they would set up a citywide Wi-Fi or some kind of communications network. And basically said, kind of what we were going to do, if they're going to do that, a request or a kind of a modification, we would be looking for. If we still wanted to have the ability to control a landing page in the park, we'd either just buy our own router, or ask them for permission to it, or to add that type of router at our location. So now that I contacted him, that's exactly what we discussed.
Alright, thank you for that update. I also want y'all to know that the city has actually extended their Wi-Fi service into that side of the park. And so the city secretary said that it is possible now for those pads in that area to be able to access the city's Wi-Fi page, so that we may not need to do anything where we're paying money or having to do that. We'll be able to have people who are using the park go onto the cities. So I don't-
I'll check that out.
Okay.
And there's also a thing about capacity too, because once people know about that, then it could really overload their entire network, or if they're not set up to actually prepare for it. People knowing about it and actually using it. Saying one or two people connect to it's not a big deal, you start having some kind of event out there, and you get a hundred.
That's a good plan, so you'll, you'll check that out.
Yeah.
Alright, we don't have any other action to take on that. So let's go on to ten, discuss and/or take action on the Lake Toak New Regional Chamber of Commerce Luncheon, sponsored by our EDC that's coming up here in April. So we're responsible for April's Chambers Luncheon. And y'all have done this in the past, so you, you know, kind of tell me what y'all want to do. Do y'all want to do it at a restaurant like Rancheros? Or do you want to do it in the Chamber of Commerce building, like we did the last, the one that I attended? And maybe have Ms. Dale's, you know, bring food, or Rancheros, what do you guys want to do?
I'm not much of a supporter of the press, I think I'm on the-
Um, do you agree to have the luncheon at the Chamber, or do you want to have it somewhere else?
At the Chamber.
Okay.
Yeah.
Normally they do.
Yeah.
Alright, and then do we want to have Ms. Dale's? Because we, we need to have a restaurant from here, we need a caterer, but we need a caterer from inside our city. That, that's part of why we're able to do that as an EDC. Do you want us to do Ms. Dale's, or do you want us to do Rancheros? Do we have any other options?
I've always been a fan of Rancheros, we've been there all the time.
Alright, and then we have the opportunity to have a speaker to present some information. And we could do either finding a local business who would like to speak up and, you know, talk about their business. Or the other thought that I had is, they were talking last time about Earl's Payroll Solutions, that particular business unit in the Earl's Tax Office, which is different than doing taxes. So they just briefly mentioned it, but it's actually a service for businesses. So new people who are doing their businesses, who are not aware of things like you have to make quarterly tax payments, what kind of forms you have to fill out, what you need to do, whether you're going to be a corporation, an LLC, a sole proprietor. This is a company that will actually set that up and help them do that and stay at a good place. We could have them come and present more detailed information about that particular business that they're providing services through. What do you all think?
Alright, well, as, as a guy who's thinking about starting a business here, I think it's great.
Okay. So the Chair would entertain a motion that we have the luncheon at the Chamber Building from Rancheros, and our speaker will be from Earl's Payroll Solutions.
I'll make the last one.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
You may. Alright, discuss and/or take action regarding the sponsorship of job training at the public library. And Brett, you were going to go and attend that?
Uh, well, they, I did, and Mary, I have to talk, I have to get back with Mary to see how, what the outcome of that training was, to see what she, what she might need as far as more PCs go, because she came in and got a, a grant from us. And, but I, I was skeptical about whether the computer she had really needed to be, be replaced for what they were doing. Really, I just needed to add more RAM, and then I had to fix a couple. But they, you know, the ones she's got are good, but if she's going to actually scale up and do these types of things, it would still make sense for her to have like four or five laptops, as best I can guess. And to put them on a different platform, so that people would have experience with two different types of platforms, and how to work on one totally Google, one totally Windows, that type of thing. Because actually, Google's actually starting to get pretty big, as far as that goes. So, and then I'll make a recommendation to her, what's, what's going to be her best thing for her buck.
Okay. That sounds good, I don't know that we need to have any motions on that item. Alright, so let's go on to number twelve, and discuss or take action regarding Dale's Old Fashioned Hamburgers as a Business of the Month for February, and selecting a new Business of the Month for March.
Okay, we said we didn't have the survey back from Dale's.
Okay.
But I asked for a survey and I don't have one, I don't have a copy.
Alright, so has the procedure been historically that the EDC gets a survey filled out before a business is promoted as Business of the Month?
Well, we only started this when-
Yeah, just one time, that's all, that's all we had, that's all, like that, right, no?
No, we've done it for, since, um, we've had four or five on there. And what it was, is that, um, they would, we would nominate a business, and then we could go and have them fill out the survey. If they filled out the survey, it would be added to the website as Business of the Month for advertising on the front page of the website. And then they would get, um, a link that goes over and provides the background information about the business. And then they also got a certificate that was, um, printed out on photo paper. But mainly, I've just done all of that. We've just nominated and had them fill out the surveys.
Okay, alright, so I'm going to, I'm going to take a motion to table this this time, because we have got to deal with the issue of the websites and being out of compliance here later in the agenda. And so we'll, we'll talk about that a little bit later.
I would like to state that if there's anything that's out of compliance, it's not on my website.
It's on this agenda.
Civic Plus has already said that my, my website is in compliance.
Can we have a motion to table this?
Yes, I have a motion to table this.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, so now we're going to discuss and take action about the TEDC memberships. Um, as I said, we, the dues are a hundred and seventy dollars, and there have been four dues paid for members on this board. I have paid for my own dues. The only people that will still be standing to do that will be, well, I listed them earlier. Brett, Elizabeth,
Cindy.
Cindy, and then Mary. Okay, so what we'll do is get with me later, and we'll see about getting you set up, and you won't be set up until after the city council officially puts you on.
You're talking about the hundred and seventy dollar dues?
Yes.
I'm pretty sure you already did that.
Well, you may have, give me the receipt, just tell me that you paid for that, so you can be reimbursed for the one seventy.
No, Pam paid for it with it, for it with the card.
Well, it may be, but Pam did it and told me it was Allison and was actually for you. So I will get Pam to clarify that for me.
Well, I know, I was on the, I was on the phone with her as I filled it out on the website.
Okay, then it was you.
I think I got a rese, I think I got a receipt though.
Alright, definitely send that to me, either by email or bring me a paper copy, because that has to go in your file. So that brings up what does need to be in your files that have got to be maintained, not only by the position of president, but also by City Hall. Each of you must go and get your Certificate for Public Information Act and your Open Meetings Act. Now that you are officially reappointed to this board today, extending your service, you will go to the Attorney General Government's website. You'll go to where it says Open Meetings Act, you just click on it, open it. You watch it for an hour, at the end it'll tell you what to do to be able to get that certificate. The certificate will be emailed to you, and I would like for you to give me two copies. Or send me, you, that, forward that email to me with the receipt, I will print out the copies and put them in your files, okay? So you'll do both the Open Meetings Act, which has always been required, and then the Public Information Act, which was a new requirement over the last few years. In terms of the larger meeting, the only people who are required to do the Economic Development Sales Tax Workshop, you know, that goes for several days, are the person who is sitting in my seat as president, I will do that in Frisco this fall, and the city administrator, or city attorney, or city clerk. And Mary will be doing that with me. Maybe Lee, the attorney as well. So that's all you need to do at this point for that item, and we don't need to make any motions on that item, okay? So we're going to go on down to number fourteen. Discuss or take action on the First Responders Luncheon hosted by the Chamber of Commerce in Med, in coordination with the Hunt County Economic Development Alliance, involving all first responders, public works officials, school district police officers in South Hunt County. Alright, guys, so, and on April first, twenty twenty-four, this board approved being a part of the Chamber of Commerce project hosting the First Responders Luncheon. That first time that occurred was on May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four. And Lone Oak EDC paid four hundred and ninety-five dollars toward that luncheon, and West Walkeny EDC paid four hundred and ninety-five dollars toward that luncheon. So essentially, y'all approved and agreed to split the cost of the First Responders Luncheon, they hosted it in Lone Oak. This year it's our year, which was what y'all agreed to in the minute. And so this year it will be hosted here in the city of West Walkeny. They need to have a location where they can pull their fire trucks and big rigs up, and the first responders come in and out of wherever they're eating. So they don't all come and sit at the same time, they'll be pulling up, getting their lunches and go. We pay for their lunches, and anyone else who comes is a guest, and they would pay for their own lunches, which would be ten dollars. Now, last year is the split between Lone Oak and West Walkeny's EDC, and Quinlan did not participate. This year, they have agreed to participate, so the price will actually be divided in three rather than in two. So again, we'll come to the question of where to have it. The Chamber Building, they said, is large enough. Do you guys, are y'all okay with us doing it?
But it's also to be large enough for a couple of fire trucks?
They'll pull those fire trucks up down the side. So South Hunt County Fire Department was there at the Chamber meeting, and they are already ready to scout it out and say where they would pull. And again, we would sponsor it in terms of food from a restaurant in West Walkeny, at Dale's or Rancheros. But it's good for our businesses, and that, and that's what we do, that's what we're supposed to be doing. So I would take a motion to have the first, to host the second First Responders Luncheon in May at the Chamber with Rancheros. Well, y'all could do Rancheros or some Ms. Dale's. You want Rancheros or some Dale's?
I'm just, I'm unfamiliar with what Dale's does.
Hamburgers.
Okay.
Catfish.
Yeah, that's what starts like catfish. Have good catfish.
Actually, I got it. I'm good with that.
You want to do Dale's?
Yeah, splits, share the love.
That sounds great to me. So Chair would entertain a motion for us to host this in May at the Chamber Building with Ms. Dale's as the provider of the food, guests to be ten dollars, and to split the cost in thirds with the other two EDCs.
I made that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, item fifteen. Discuss and/or take action regarding possible EDC participation in the Chamber of Commerce Fishing Tournament that is scheduled for May tenth in the city park. If, if it rains, our rain date will be May seventeenth. So we have already, it was budgeted for, and we have already given them their check for the five thousand dollars for this, so they have been paid for this. And the only question that I really have it from, for you guys, is do we want to do something else there? Have y'all done that before? Do we want an EDC booth? Do we want to, they've got a catfish cook-off that people are participating in? Do we as a board want to do something specific for this? Okay, so are you already going to be there?
Yep.
Fire Department.
Okay, alright.
I don't, well, I can do either one.
Well, we've got a member there.
Okay, so my question, my first question, what would be the strategy of being involved there? To promote the EDC in general, or something specific?
It'd be to promote the EDC, if we wanted to do that.
And what kind of, what kind of ROI would we look as a metric? Hand to the air, I don't know, I'm just-
I, I wanted to offer you guys the opportunity if you wanted to do something. I don't know that we need to, you know, I don't see any particular benefit to having a booth other than to just communicate to anyone who's there from businesses that were there and all of that.
Hey, we're here, type thing. Well, I'd be willing to, I'd be willing to- Yeah, I'd be willing, I'd be willing to help out if, if we as a board want to do it, I would commit to helping out on that.
Well, I could set up a booth. And I noticed on Agenda y'all were talking about cards, I don't know if y'all are aware, we have over four boxes of EDC cards for you guys to sign and fill out. We've had those for years and years, we have all kinds of EDC material. So we could set up a booth and just have information about the EDC out there. And I, I would, I'd man that, I would do that.
That would be great, yeah, I, I like that.
Okay, alright. So Chair would take a motion for us to go ahead and set up a booth at the event to promote the EDC to the public?
I'd make a motion.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, do we take volunteers?
You just volunteered, so Derek, you and I, you and I are going to be sitting in the park, along with that gentleman right over there who-
Didn't I mention something about doing something for the kids?
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know, but we'll be there for business, to, to bring in businesses and all of that. But they've got a whole bunch of stuff planned, it's going to be pretty, pretty amazing this year. Alright, let's go to number sixteen. Discuss and/or take action regarding EDC Facebook page, EDC webpage, and the use of electronic records. Alright, guys, so our attorney is not happy. And that's because she was not aware of what had been put out there and what had been going on in terms of these websites and everything else.
I would like to just say that the only thing that I've created or have been a part of is the website, any Facebook pages, I'm not, I have no control over anything on those. And I have turned over all the information to the website to all of the members. And there is nothing that's not in compliance with the website, the website was voted on, the website was approved by council, and everything else is fine, thank you.
Do you have access to her, the website she created?
I put it in that they all have the website information.
Okay, I'll get it.
Is it in the letter?
No, it was sent to them, um, through, yes. The, um-
If I know about it, how do y'all not know? You type in westwalkeneeEDC.com, and there it is.
The website is there, but the creator owns the website, whoever creates it-
Access to make edits.
Has the access to make edits.
Oh, 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 okay.
I didn't have you, you're not attached to the, um, general- list of people that uh, they have on there, so it didn't go to you. But it was sent out to Kathy, Elizabeth, um, Rhett, I believe.
Was I here then?
It, it was just uh, yesterday.
Oh.
Or no, Sunday, yeah, yesterday, sorry.
Okay, so, one of you, Kathy, would you forward that to me? Okay, thank you. So here's, here's the dilemma that we end up with, okay? I'm going to try and do it in a nutshell, I can do it in more detail if we need to, but in a nutshell. When you have somebody, regardless of who it is, on a board or any place, create a Facebook page or an independent website, then what happens is you have that person, like in this case, who has ownership of it, so they're the ones who-
Actually, it's, it, I do not have ownership, it is under the Westtawakini EDC's account. It, I have no access to it anymore.
So, the person-
She, I, I've got to go, she's just unruly, thank you.